Here.
Ms. Thornt.
Yes.
Ms. Byron.
Here.
Mr. Hardy.
Here.
Ms. Thomas.
Here.
Ms. Datt, Mr. Dattley.
Here.
We've got six trustees in attendance at the forum. Do you have a meeting? Not a rock and roll with this. Okay. Uh. No request to attend by remote this evening. We have a motion but through the minutes of September twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four fifteen. September sixteen, two thousand one four.
I'm.
Second.
Move by both, seconded by Thomas. Any corrections to the minutes? There being none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion self carried.
One abstention.
And one abstention. Getting nine and one, nine zero loss. All right, that's it for the minutes. The next item is the President's Report, the Civility Report Pledge. Ms. Bowe, would you start the circle again with us, please?
Uh, in the interest of civility, I pledge to promote civility by listening, being respectful of others, acknowledging that we are all striving to support and improve our community, and understanding that we each may have different ideas for achieving that objective.
Thank you. Okay, beginning with the President's Report, I've got a couple of items this evening that I touch base on. First and foremost, I'd like to thank Marcus Sekalas, the ComEd rep who notified us last week of a contribution from ComEd in the tune of five hundred dollars to be spent toward our Halloween events. So if it was the permission of the board, I will have that money forwarded to the Service Club for the Halloween activities coming up the latter part of the month. Uh, thank ComEd for the contribution and we will forward it to those who can use it for that event. Okay, the next item I've got is, if you recall some months ago, I had a conversation with you guys about the village investigating the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund as a pension for our employees. Uh, we had finally gotten response from them and it's passed, oh, I guess it was a week ago.
Last week, yes.
This is something we put into play, I believe, last May. We finally, with their problems, they finally got that to us. Uh, it's something I believe we're going to want them to come out here and give us a presentation on to this situation. It will basically double our four fifty-seven pension situation. Right now, we don't have a pension. We have the four fifty-seven, which is the governmental equivalent to a 401K. Okay? And we have the four fifty-seven, and that is right now running us somewhere between forty-five and fifty thousand dollars a year. It looks like the IMRF proposal that they submitted to us will run us about ninety-five thousand dollars a year. It's roughly forty to fifty thousand dollars more than what we're currently got with the four fifty-seven. So, that being said, that's why I want to bring those people in to have a conversation with us in regards to that. And the nice thing with the IMRF is it's a state-run program. It can be utilized by anybody moving through a municipal job. So we could find somebody that had twenty years with another municipality. They could join us for ten more years and put that to their thirty with IMRF. Right now, if they leave the IMRF, we don't have anything to entice them with other than the four fifty-seven, which is a smaller plan, so. It took them a little bit of time. Uh, there is one bit of an issue with it, though, is uh, they have set us a January twenty-twenty-five as a deadline on this proposal. That does mean we have to do this by January twenty-twenty-five. But if we don't make the decision by January twenty-twenty-five, then we will have to do another application. And that will run us roughly fourteen, fifteen hundred dollars a year. Yeah, because they have said the annuity that they've done will be expired and will not be of value to them at that point, so we'll have to redo it again. Well, that is it. Something we need to think about, talk about. And I think in the future of board meetings, we will schedule their representative, now that they've got us in their program as an applicant, they've assigned us a representative, their representative can come out and spell out all the details of the IMRF to us. Okay, that's one item. Uh, the other one is the state statutes of Illinois provide a mechanism for municipalities to set up a management uh format to handle the day-to-day operations. Some management are referred to as village managers, others are village administrators. Those are the two forms that have been set up by the state that municipalities can utilize. It's been my thought that the village is at that point in its career that it needs to consider a full-time, or not a full-time, but a professional day-to-day management of the village. I have been in conversations along with the clerk and a former trustee and village resident, Malcolm Morris. We've reached out to the government studies at Northern Illinois University. They have a program that offers assistance to governors or governances such as ourselves. They have a public administration program over there. They've got us in touch with the Illinois City and County Management Association. And I've had a conversation with them. The village of Sleepy Hollow could very easily approve the position of a village administrator by a board access. It would simply be an ordinance that would establish the precedence to establish a village administrator, a village manager, not administrator, within the village of Sleepy Hollow. It does not say we hire one, it just allows us to set the precedence to hire one into our form of government. And it also, when you make that determination, the ordinances, you can provide what duties that these individuals will carry out. So the board never loses its overall handle of the village. You know, any village manager would be below the village president and below the village board. The village manager would always have to respond, or administrator would have to, I'm sorry. The two terms, the two different definitions, yes. Village administrator is the one I'm talking about. The ordinance-driven position. I said, but that we would do as an ordinance of the village, and we would draft that ordinance up to continue or to have the duties and the tasks that we wanted that administrator to have. Okay? So that's a possibility. Uh, I've talked about this off and on with Eugene uh, and going through with Malcolm and Tony with the representative from the city and county municipal, county and county management association. Uh, we think it's a possibility for the village of Sleepy Hollow to consider a manager. Not a full-time one, but probably a part-time, someone that could do twenty-eight to thirty-two hours a week. And talking with Eugene, we've looked at the numbers. It's going to be close. It's not, you know, a whole bunch of money we've got left to deal with. But if things line up all right, and it is very possible that you could hire a part-time village administrator to handle the day-to-day operations of the village and stay within our budget. Now, let me say, it's a close one. Then when we come to the dollars. The first big hurdle I see, though, would be bringing on that manager, or that, yeah, manager, administrator. Yeah, administrator. Uh, it's going to need to be some onboarding with them. You're going to need some reference with a couple of other people. I talked with Eugene, I offered Eugene, and he said he didn't want to be a village manager, but he would be willing to help train the village manager in this position. Uh, in talking with the ICCMA gentleman, he said, yeah, if we could get an individual part-time, it's not, these are retired municipal administrators. They're not just necessarily somebody looking for a job and says, I'm a manager. These are people who are typically retired, problem management positions of other municipalities, and have the skills that we would need. And we just briefly just said, you know, part-time finance. It would be the two main things that we would like administrator to handle. And I said, off the top of my head, he could probably come up with ten or twelve suggestions that afternoon, up to, you know, who would come our way. Uh, he's also had a very good idea that we don't start with a permanent part-timer, we do an interim. We bring an interim in to take six or eight months to figure out what the village really needs, and then help the village go look for another manager to fill that spot. So that's what, you know, kind of a two-step process. So, I mean, that's a lot for an evening to throw out here in, you know, the last five minutes concerning the history or the future of the village. But I think in order to say sustainable, you're going to need somebody that stays on top of the day-to-day, and not just a bunch of part-time volunteers that are doing it for the fun of the day. Well, if you've got any questions on it, think about it, give me a call. I'll reach out and see if Mr. Thompson would be willing to stop by. I don't know whether we want to do, like, maybe a special meeting. We could set aside, we've done this in the past. Well, we've taken a Sunday afternoon, and we call a special board meeting just for a particular topic. You know, it's a bit of a process. We have to send out the notices, everybody has to be served. And then, but we can have the meeting on a Sunday afternoon from one o'clock until three o'clock, when everybody's somewhat awake and attentive, not thinking about tomorrow's job and getting out of here before the night's over. You know, that's something we could do. Otherwise, we could just schedule them in on a Monday night and sit here and have them give a presentation.
I like the afternoon.
What timeframe are we talking about? When does this move on, or when?
It can be done anytime, you know, this is an ordinance.
Yeah.
So it's just, we follow the procedures we do with our ordinances. We've had run through that process. While the audit is not a text amendment, so there's no public hearing on that.
Right.
So, you know.
Right.
It's just, you know, it's just an addition to. What I'm asking, you know, is consider adding another tool to the box. So, yeah, we find out we don't need a tack hammer, we need, you know, a sledgehammer, we've got type of thing. So, there's no expenditure at this point. If we, you know, we did ask for some help in obtaining an employee, they would probably ask for some, some funds. But nowhere near what the, the commercial job seekers will charge us. There are some organizations out there that specialize in finding employees within municipal um situations that have municipal experience. But in my experience is, those people charge more than the village of Sleepy Hollow will pay. Uh, what I'm trying to do is find somebody to, you know, low on the total poll, it's not going to take us for an army of aid to get this job done. And I found a couple of people with the association that, you know, talking, well, may have to pay them if, you know, we do look for somebody, but as I said, we've gotten a lot of information from them out of the last couple of months, you know, allowing them to come up with forty-five thousand dollars. Any questions on that? Okay. All right, so got the contribution from the Service Club. Let's move on to the next item, the Code of Report.
Uh, tonight I do have something to report. I'm pleased to report that as for, as of tonight, we have one hundred percent compliance with this signing and receipt of the uh, receipts for the code of conduct. So we have one hundred percent compliance. Thank you all. Uh, you guys may not look at this as much, but this is my grade card because I'm the one that gets judged on getting complaints. However, being the positive, negative, on the certificate for training for the OMA, we're five out of six. And so, but a hundred percent compliance on the receipt, I'm very pleased, and thank you all very much. That's all I have for tonight.
All right. Code of Conduct, we've got a hundred percent. The OMA, we've got five out of six. Okay, Planning and Zoning, this gentleman's not here, Kelly, the ability, not so true, for the office. Uh, the Attorney Report.
Mr. President, you were, the village code provision about campaign signs has come up recently. Uh, and you asked me to take a look at that, the chief was looking at it. Uh, and so I've given you all a memorandum and a draft ordinance uh, to update those regulations. So on the books is, in these zoning regulations are some provisions about temporary campaign signs. But in the time since those were last reviewed or adopted, uh, the courts have made pretty clear that there are limitations on any municipality's ability to restrict uh, First Amendment signage rights even in a residential area. And the state of Illinois has adopted a statute that proclaims that outdoor political campaign signs are a matter of statewide interest, and except for matters of size, local municipalities should not uh, attempt to regulate those types of signs. So it, it, what's been on the books has not been enforceable. Um, and it's a discussion I've had with several of the chiefs over time. And it may be time to update those regulations. This is currently a zoning matter, so it's not something for enactment tonight. It would have to go through the process of a public hearing, planning and zoning recommendation, and come back to you uh, more or less in the format that I proposed. Um, so it's here for discussion or just sort of notification. You, I would ask that you, at least by consensus, authorize the village president to sign a petition uh, proposing this type of amendment and get the process started.
What's the amendment? What's the amendment? What are we amending?
We're amending.
It's in the package.
No, correct, but you want to go, you want to go, if I understood correctly, twelve square feet versus sixteen, is that what I?
No, nine, up to nine square feet.
Okay. The ordinance.
Well, that's, that's a proposal. That's why it's here for discussion.
It's number twenty-two-four.
A four-by-four, which I know this is coming because I have a four-by-four sign for one of our neighbors and friends in this community, is why this is being brought to the board? Why would we keep smaller than a four-by-four if we don't want it's my property?
No, it's for discussion for the board tonight. Nine is not a, it, it was a number that's.
Six, nine has been suggested, sixteen's been suggested, thirty-two's been suggested.
We know why this is suggested, though, because it's my house and the sign in my yard.
Uh, no, man, it's not. It came to us from Mr. Fleck, from other positions in the village and other situations during the years.
It was discussed four years ago.
Fleck and Chief Parma, they asked if we would reconsider this. We had a conversation with Mr. Schuster. And in order to get Mr. Fleck clear details as to what his responsibilities are in regards to these signs, we need to address it, so.
Aren't the current signs restricted to six or nine square feet?
Six square feet.
Six, okay.
Like a small.
So we'd be expanding it to the nine square feet, and Jenny, you're asking if we can expand up to six feet?
Sixty.
That's, but it's over ten feet onto my property. Any sign would be available. If I wanted to put a four-by-four foot of my daughter's cheer sign, which is also in my room or on my lawn, that would be allowed as well. Okay, so it's any sign, as long as it's on your property, we've talked about this before, that any sign, as long as it's on your property.
Right, but the old ordinance, I thought, says that it's restricted.
Political signs are restricted to three square feet.
Okay.
And it also had time limits involved on it, and also said that the candidate.
Right.
So, with currently nine, you're, I'm sorry, not nine, three square feet, sorry. Um, Jenny, are you asking to move it up to four square feet?
Uh, yeah, four, because you've had the signs as well, Courtney, when you were running for county board.
Don't hate me for this, they were three by threes.
Okay, so twelve. It's our property.
The, the state statute says you can restrict by size. It doesn't require nine or sixteen or fifty. That's for discussion.
Alls we're doing now, though, correct me if I'm wrong, we're just looking if we should give it to Planning and Zoning. Then they recommend to us, that's when we get down to the particulars, is that correct?
Yeah.
I find that going to planning, we ask them to discuss the different sizes.
That's all.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
It, it would be better if you would send a particular.
A suggestion.
Suggestion. I mean, the petition, I guess it could say restricting outdoor signs to a blank amount of size, but.
We're just suggesting nine. When we talked about it, we suggested nine. So if you would like to make a motion to send this to P and Z, authorizing the village president and clerk to sign a petition to P and Z, for them to have their public hearing and consider changing size.
Just to start the process. It won't even take effect till after the election.
Yeah, right.
Oh, that's correct.
Because that was.
Yeah, it won't get done.
I guess they would, because the four tickets that I got two weeks ago might have said otherwise.
Well, you signed a form on all the office saying you would follow and obey.
Do I own a boat?
I don't care, it's on your property. And whoever owns it.
Do I own the property?
I don't know, but you use it as your residence to declare your residency within the village.
We know exactly what's going on here.
We know that leading by example, it's not a forte of some people. Well, okay.
We know that freedom is, is another thing.
There's no words for nothing else, don't lose.
Just one quick, surrounding villages.
Yes.
What's their?
They are in the same situation. We've had, the chief went through a half a dozen of them, probably ten or twelve. We've seen everything from nine to sixteen feet. We've had them still leave it to the candidates to take them off as, you know, to be responsible for us. So it's all over the place, but we are really on the small end of six square feet.
Yeah.
So that's, that's two by three feet.
I'd like to ask P and Z to really consider increasing. I mean, I'm not necessarily a big fan of, like, all of it, but people are expressing it so differently. Now, I know some of them are like longer flag kind of looks, so I like the idea of the square footage to get an idea, so.
Nice, something.
Yes.
So with this whole thing. If you're looking to somebody to point at, who, who brought this up, it was me. Um, Jeff Fleck came to me with a complaint that we had gotten about a candidate signing. Um, it wasn't one up the street here, it was one in another location. So we had this conversation, one of the, one of the outcomes of that conversation is this was talked about numerous times over the years, and nobody's ever done anything about it. So my, my position is, okay, let's do something, let's come up with something that's workable, so I don't have to go to Washington DC and go to one of the candidate headquarters to get them to enforce our ordinance, because that's basically what our ordinance says right now. Okay, so that's how this whole thing started. We have taken a hands-up approach to campaign signs. We're not enforcing it right now until the village decides what direction they're going to go, and it's in my direction. We're trying to be overly fair with it, but we'd like to have something that Jeff can work with when we do get them. So that's where this whole thing came.
But we do enforce signs on public property.
That's correct.
If it's a sign on public property, we're taking it out.
Right.
We're not even calling a call, you're saying. If it's on the village property, right away, it's gone.
Because I did have a call about uh, garage sale sites, and I think I called you or somebody and answered about that, and because I wasn't familiar with the ordinance, and they were on public property, and so we, they were taken out, so that's.
So, if we got a motion in second to forward this to P and Z for a public hearing and a review and a recommendation back to the board?
I move to send it to P and Z requesting consideration of nine, sixteen. Nine, sixteen feet, consider the weird sizes, yeah.
Second. Move by both, seconded by Thorn to send, authorize the village president and clerk to sign the petition, sending this to P and Z for a public hearing with the recommendation that they look at the rules of nine and sixteen. Any further comments, questions, or discussion? There being none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, thank you all. Mr. Schuster.
Uh, that's all for now. Uh, there'll be some discussion about the municipal sales and service occupation taxes later.
Well, thank you, sir. Uh, Engineer Report, Mr. Steel.
Uh, I wanted to give you an update on crane drive. Uh, basically is all that's left is from shoulder stone and hatching in the village, and then just some punchless items and cleanup. Uh, they'll be out there tomorrow, finishing all that up with some minor cleanup a little bit later on, so. Other than that, we have an item later on under new business.
How did they work on the catch basins?
Uh, they actually got them all cleared out, and they just need to do the lowering up to them, so it's a nice approach.
Are they going to paint those all yellow?
Yeah.
I think there's one that's done.
Yeah, there's two on the one side, and the other one's.
All right. Thank you, Jeff. Uh, Dr. Finance, Mr. Manion.
Requesting motion for approval of the accounts payable in the amount of one hundred and sixty-two thousand, occasion every twenty dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Oh, second.
Moved by Hardy, seconded by Thorn to approve the account payable of October seventh, two thousand twenty-four in the amount of one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars and thirty-eight cents. Any comments, questions, or?
I did have one question. I'm sorry, I could have asked this earlier, but I saw it before, or just before getting here. I noticed that we had to purchase detour signs and everything. Do we normally, do, do we have to purchase signs each time we do construction, or was it just?
It was for, just because we had to close down the locations. And I didn't have any type-three barricades. It's like a special, you can't just put up the, the yellow.
Got it.
Sawyers ones, you got to have it reflective.
When I first saw, I saw the left sign and the right sign, and there were different prices, and I thought left sign was more expensive than the right, and I realized, no, there were four of one and three of the other, and yeah. So, okay, just for us. Thank you.
All right, no other comments, questions, or comments? Ms. Byron.
Aye.
Mr. Thornt.
Aye.
Ms. Bowe.
Aye.
Mr. Hardy. Ms. Thomas.
Aye.
Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Six, four votes, no negative votes, I'm so curious.
Uh, I was approved by a gentleman from Nord Industries who works with ComEd. And they have offered to replace all the lights in the village hall and in public works. Um, his estimate was around twenty-five hundred dollars. Um, and then through that, they're, they apply for a grant from ComEd. And ComEd is willing to give us sixty-one fifty towards replacing the lights. So, you know, more than double of, of what it actually costs. Um, I was talking to them, um, they may even be able to put in a vehicle project station. So, you know, I'm looking into that for us, for the village, you know. Granted, we don't need it today, but maybe this is something that'll help us, you know, down the road.
Yeah.
You know, if we have an electric squad car. Or a hybrid. Um, got the preliminary results of the audit, all good. They're willing to present the audit results on the, what was it, November third meeting? So they will be available for that. That's, that's it for right now.
Well, good. Thank you, Eugene. Uh, and look, it comes up to eight o'clock. And we have got an eight o'clock presentation by Judy Liberty.
Hi, Erica.
You must be Judy Liberty.
I'm Judy Liberty, yes. Thank you all for, uh, uh, listening to our guest question. I'm Judy Liberty, yes. Thank you all for, uh, uh, listening to our guest question. Um, I'm Judy Liberty, this is my husband Mike. We live on Joy Lane and Fawn, which is. Two blocks, uh, east of Randall. And I'm petitioning the board to allow for a, uh, little. Free library book nook somewhere on my property is close to my property line. On my side of the culver is possible, because we don't have one on my side of. Speaking hollow and I thought that it would be nice being on a major thoroughfare. Um, people walking by could take or leave a book. I know it's considered a structure, so I know that it's not really, um. Something that I should have, but I'm just asking the board if they would consider.
This would be on Joy?
It would be, yeah, it would be on Joy, not on Fawn, cause I'm in the court, so I don't think it gets as much access as Joy, so. It would be, I, you know, like, at the top of the culver on my property, um, on the Joy side.
You're right there on the corner, so you've got a fifteen foot swale right of way. People would be parking on the side of the road and then going over to your box?
Um, yes, I guess they would. They would be park- parking, pulling over probably on my culver. Of, of Joy Lane and probably getting out and, and accessing the book, yes.
That's my concern, your traffic at that point, they're at an intersection.
Yeah.
Having cars stop on Joy, it's extremely busy road.
You're right.
Have you thought of putting it on the, on court side, up by your driveway?
Um. Or closer to the corner? Like, I could, I would consider closer to the corner, sure. I mean.
You want it to be visible, so.
Yeah.
And I have never seen anyone parking and going up.
Yeah, it's cause I usually walk up to them.
Most of, most of those.
They're walking.
Nooks, but they're walking, it's people out walking and.
Their kids and their dog. That's what I, I really, yeah.
Yeah, I know, but you're still gonna have somebody maybe stop the car.
You're right.
You've got the traffic there that you're not expecting to be, you know, hard.
So if it faces the cul-de-sac, so they pull in the cul-de-sac and then, but it's seen from Joy.
You go west or east house? Closer to Randall or away from?
Away from Randall.
Okay.
So you see it coming down into the neighborhood, wouldn't be a bad spot for it.
Yeah, we could, maybe.
And is that the time you get to that part of Joy, though? I mean, I walk that, I walk from, from three to five during the day with four dogs. I do it on purpose to slow traffic down on Joy Lane. So many dogs. Um, you know, I feel like, looking at the traffic though, things do tend to slow down over by Fawn, because people are turning it, they're turning left or right into deer. They're starting to come into town and they're not even really up on that curve and the, and the straightaway down onto the hill yet. And especially being able to come into the court. I like the idea of that being up there. So you wanted to face it up to Joy.
Swale in the winter time.
I'm sorry to say that.
Walking through the swale in the winter time, that's where we, all the snow is gonna go.
Oh, can we put it near, can we put it near the, where the distance the mailbox would be from the road?
You know, the mailbox is federal issue. They're allowed to be there, we couldn't put anything that close. You, that's why I said, your driveway, right at the edge of your driveway, your property line, would be the ideal place. Cause your driveway, you'll probably keep clear, people can still see it and get to it. But if it's sitting in the corner.
Yeah.
Property, you've got a fifteen foot swale on either side of that corner. And when public works plows. All that stuff goes into the swales.
Well, my culver isn't too deep, so I figured if we did it, if we installed it at the top of the culver on my side of the property. Then people would be okay with crossing through the culver, cause it's nothing. So I felt, I thought it, it would. It wouldn't be completely out of the way, but it is out of the way for the snowplows. Um. But if, you know.
Gonna be seen.
I wanted it someplace where it was gonna be seen.
Right.
And used, it's supposed to help the community, you know, so I didn't wanna just install it.
Would you be opposed to putting it in the island of the cul-de-sac itself?
No, I would put it there.
If it's on village property, we'd probably just have you, have, we would sign it. Like a waiver of liability, just in case, you know, something, so the village doesn't take responsibility for it, but.
I would ask your insurance company, your homeowner's insurance, just to give a slip and fall or something, just so legal liability first, for your own protection.
That way you don't have to worry about people falling into your driveway, walking or up your driveway. And that's up to you, though.
So that would be in the cul-de-sac and Fawn then?
Yeah.
It is a little out of the way, but that's what I'm thinking, as you want it to be seen.
Yeah, cause the shoulders should be outside.
Yeah, and we can, I'm not gonna push snow onto it, but there's some.
He might wanna sound your book.
All the clouds are stopped around.
Would, would it be possible to make this a seasonal thing, so that you don't have to grapple with the snow and stuff? Cause I would think the demand on that would drop off when it gets cold.
There's no harm in just keeping books in there all year round.
Right.
There is no harm. Um, it's not something I would uninstall, because it goes into the ground, it's like, it's a structure.
Sure.
But, um, yeah, I mean, it probably will have less, less user destroying.
Well, I was saying to give you more, more options in terms of where you put it.
I see.
Right now that you had to try to avoid, like, the snow being thrown on it and.
Yeah.
Um, you might have a way to winterize it or something, so that, so that it's protected from that and that'd be it, you don't have to worry about it till spring or whatever.
Probably to be out of the location.
And I was reevaluating here, okay.
Consensus of the board then to have a approach, Mrs. Decker, about a whole harmless agreement, uh, replacement of a structure. Within the cul-de-sac and just that font.
Be happy to donate as well.
Is she, maybe ask the real question. So when they sign the no harmless thing, are they gonna have to apply for a permit? Cause it's a structure, cause I don't think they.
I bring Kelly.
They could wait up. I'm just, can we, if. That can speak, can we go back and wait?
Uh, let me speak with, uh, let me speak with I C C I on this.
I'm just, yes. I, it's something good for the village and for, you know.
If they charge you a P I, will help donate towards it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just pay it. I, because I just don't.
We'll have a conversation.
Okay.
Okay, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Alright.
All those opposed? Okay, all.
Thank you.
We'll be in touch.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing it.
Here in the end, thank you.
Okay. And we can check the eight mark presentation, move to, not much from the public, and we've got a clean sheet. Move on to trustee report, laws and parks, Mr. Hardy.
Um, I was gonna mention that when, uh, Jeff made his report, I received three comments regarding. Uh, the work on Crane Drive, all of them were complimentary. One was a letter that I shared with the board, and then two by phone. But, uh, very favorable opinions on what was done on Crane Drive, so. I thank Jeff and I thank all of us. Um, one quick, another quick item, the playground on the west side. As was mentioned at the last meeting by Public Works, the last of the playground equipment was removed. I see an old business, we need to take a look at, I don't know, options for the future for that property over there. It's all I have to report.
Okay, thank you, Ed. Uh, finance, Mr. Thorn.
Um, I'll hand this over to, uh, 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 the finance director, I understand he has a couple of things he wants to cover.
Okay. Um, well, I'm gonna do the tax levy first. Uh, we have to announce, um, in advance before we pass the tax levy of the month. And, um, calculating it three point four percent, which is the maximum that we can do because of, uh, P tells. It would be nine hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars that we would seek from the county. Um. I think it basically comes down from the average house to be about twenty-five dollars.
Make sure, attach and say.
Yeah, twenty, twenty-four, twenty-four sixty-six for the average house's inheritance value that of four hundred and forty, twenty-five thousand dollars. So, um, then in the November meeting, then we will vote on the, uh, the tax light. And. The other one is, item is the, uh, the ordinance for implementing the non-home rule, municipal retailers, uh, tax. We've discussed that at the. Finance committee about, um, implementing that. It's nothing that we are gonna see a dime for until twenty-twenty-six. But we can at least state it on the books, so that when, uh, that gate rolls around, we're all set to go. Um, this is only gonna affect our, our businesses and I think we're gonna, we're gonna seek the full one percent for, um. That we're allowed to.
Okay. One that's twenty, twenty-four dash and we're lowering. Ordinance implementing non-home rule municipal retailer occupation tax and non-home rule municipal service occupation tax. We have a motion so approved.
So moved?
Second.
Moved by Thorn, seconded by Bo.
Mr. President, that's with the rate of one percent.
Rate one percent. Correct.
So there's three blanks in the. Draft that you package and each of those would say one percent.
Yes, okay.
Okay, been moved and seconded. Any comments, questions, further discussion on this? This is, um, raising our sales tax, with our commercial district would charge their customers. By one percent, we're currently at seven point five percent. This would bring us up to eight point five percent. We're still a good. Percent of point and a half below anybody else in the neighborhood. Uh, the hard part about this is having to wait another eighteen months for it to go into effect. Cause then it'll be another four months from that before you start to see the funds come in. But this thing will be running about twenty-two months before any money comes in.
Shouldn't be that long.
It should take effect next July.
You know, it's not until, you know, first twenty-twenty-six is when it gets started collecting, but then there's a delay between.
Well, I understand that, there's a four month.
Yeah, so that's what I'm saying. With that, with their delay team on the lay, and our report, their month, uh, four month delay and. It's gonna be almost twenty-two years once it comes out, twenty-two months.
Yeah, we have to give it to them before July.
It gives, gives to them before May and it should take effect in July. That's my understanding, but we can clear that up. That, that'd just be a few months ahead of what you've said, but no, uh, significant impact before twenty-twenty-six.
Right, yeah. No, it's not gonna impact the twenty-twenty-six, uh, budget at all. Just another year down the road. Any other comments or questions on this? If not, small call please. Mrs. Prior.
Aye.
Mr. Hardy.
Aye.
Ms. Thomas.
Aye.
Mr. Thorne.
Aye.
Ms. Jattly.
Aye.
Ms. Bo.
Aye.
Six, four votes, no negative votes, I'm so curious, thank you all.
That's all I have.
That's everything.
Well, alright. Thank you, Eugene, thank you, Mark. Uh, water and sewer, Ms. Bo.
Uh, excuse me, this is not completely on topic, but I'm gonna bring it up anyway. I was at the safety hall service club. Uh, there are some logs behind village hall that they were requesting, how, if we can. Grant them permission to put them on the bonfire just before the bonfire for Halloween, or move them so that they can be chopped. Um, just wanted to get that out of the way. I'm not sure who I'm supposed to address that with. There. Thank you. Um, and then also I did have a resident who, unfortunately, I didn't get it in in time for the agenda, but. It is a financial question, so we'll vote on it next time. But I'd like to bring it up, it was one of the individuals whose. Water bill came in late due to the post office. I announced last meeting that due to. No fault, it would still be on them to pay it. But he came back and he wrote a very nice letter and it was his very first time ever missing a bill in twenty-five years. And we also do have the general rule, like, first time instances, we can forgive these and give a waiver. Uh, Wendy, I ran it by her after twelve. Being the water woman for twelve years. She said that everything on his record is cleared, he's taking care of it, so I would like to. Ask that we waive his fee. It was forty dollars. It wasn't, uh, an excessive use. She said they use a lot of water, but again, it's. Painted on time, it was a very polite, thoughtful letter. And on top of that, he even sent a follow-up before this water due date. Just to find out what was going on in case he needed to pay the late fee to make sure things are current, so he was doing everything right. Um, and so I would just put that on your agenda for next week, please, I'd like to, or next meeting, I'd like to vote on that.
Okay, November fourth, or no, October twenty.
Yes. That's all.
Got that.
Thanks.
Got it?
Got it.
Okay. Is that it?
Yep.
Alright, thank you, Courtney. Uh, next time is, uh, public, uh, or police and public safety, Mr. Dattley.
Uh, yeah, a couple of things, um, going on. Always a lot going on, but, um. Continue the discussion of the, uh, LPR questions posed by the board. Um, I know Chief, uh, supplied you with, all with a copy of answers for those questions. Um, wanted to continue those, if there's more questions or more discussion, um, that we need to have, um. You want to have any concerns on those or anything of that nature?
Uh, I would just like to voice that I was one of the voices against it, kind of from the beginning, but the chief and I've had some really good conversations, so I'm learning a lot more about. The oversight that's involved with it. I feel much better knowing that it's gonna be in hands of the chief and maybe one other person. I think the questions that trustee McGuire brought up last time, which were kind of similar to the concerns I had about who has access to all of these videos. Uh, the way he, the chief explained it was, you really need to have the knowledge and you also need to have access to the hot list. In order for somebody to pinpoint a specific license plate, which made me feel, well, yeah, comforted me, my concerns. Um, I think the only other thing that I'd like to consider is, while I trust the force that we're dealing with now and how you guys are going about your job. I'd like us to consider having some kind of agreement for when we do have a new chief, some kind of an interim procedure, so that, I don't know if. You wanna hand it over immediately or have some kind of oversight with the admin adjudicator or something, I'm just trying to brainstorm it, but I'd like some.
Standards put in place.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause what we don't want is, I, I know women that live in the village with kids, we don't want a pattern of people. Coming and going from our houses and we don't want people to recognize the pattern. Um, and that's. Across the village, um, a lot of women have the same concerns and husbands. Uh, it's, put some kind of standard in place where people can't recognize the pattern. If that makes sense, or have access to recognize when somebody goes to work every day, when they come home every day. Because what they can do is then ultimately influxuate break-ins or. God forbid worse. So we'd want some kind of pattern or thing put in place that keeps us safe, so nobody sees our patterns.
So are we talking internally within the police department or the general public?
I would say the general public or even, let's be honest, there could be sometimes bad cops places.
Sure.
So, like, like we said, other police departments would have access, you just never know. We just wouldn't want anybody outside of the village.
Right.
Seeing a pattern. Obviously, if you're working in the village, you would notice patterns.
Yeah, we, we, like I said in the memo, we control our data, so we restrict who has access to our data. I would never recommend to the board that. We make our data pri- uh, public. I would never recommend that to anyone. Um, so we have control over that. If we've got. Let's say we have somebody that's involved. In a messy, a messy domestic situation, and they don't want their license plate being tracked or noted by the system, we can add that license plate to the system. And the system will effectively ignore it. So there's a lot of controls in place already as far as access to it. The question that was posed by that gentleman, I'm not sure of anybody in Illinois that allows public access to any of their cameras.
Uh, yeah, I don't wanna, I don't wanna give away his city, but they.
Yeah, okay.
And just for clarification, we means chief, president, who, who is we?
So we write, when we draw up the, when we draw up the contracts, basically it's, it's the, the, the policy and the procedures come from the chief, obviously, because. Which is the way it should be, that I, I would be the one that would have to enforce those. If I've got an officer that breaks that policy, I'm the one that's gonna be displaying that officer and. And, you know, if it's egregious enough, you know, firing the officer if necessary or recommending that. So the policy comes from me. I have no problem sharing all those policies though with y'all and doing, writing those policies cooperatively. I mean, that's the way it should be done anyway. This is a community program. It's not, it's not my program. So, yeah, I would have no, no issue with that, getting input from everybody in terms of, of what restrictions we put. from everybody in terms of, of what restrictions we put in place.
Yeah, I think what Courtney and I were saying, as long as we had policies put in place that, that that maybe it, even if we get a new chief, that maybe we would agree on where they go over.
Sure.
Cuz again, there's a lot, or even say you know, there's lots of older residents that live by themselves and things like that. Or even say you go to the airport, park at the airport and all of a sudden they see you're not home for days. That, it's just that kind of safety thing outside of here.
And Julie, I think one thing that we need to remember is the cameras are at the entrances of the village, so they're not gonna, whoever is trying to review this isn't gonna still be able to see cameras at our houses, see when we're coming and going. It depends on your pattern of where you go. But one thing, but one thing that the chief pointed out to me is he would have oversight. So if a license plate was brought to his attention from West Dundee Carpersville Algonquin saying, hey, this is a suspected license plate, then when it comes up, say it comes up through Sleepy Hollow, it would be his eyes only. What I understand, like if it, I saw all the faces just went that way.
So we would be able to decide if we wanted that put on the hot list for us to be notified.
Okay.
Okay. If it's on the general hot list, let's say another department put it on there and it, the, the person would want it for a child abduction or something like that. If that car drives into our town, the camera will catch it and it will get notified. The police department is notified. It goes out over dispatch. Again, it's all recorded.
Sure.
So those dispatch numbers are always recorded. Um, and then the officer decides by looking at the, the ticket they get in the, in the car, the officer decides whether or not it's a valid hit or not and, and how badly we have to investigate it. But in terms of reviewing the videos, the officers don't have the ability to review the videos whenever they want. But it's under my control. We have to approve that officer reviewing those videos. Um, unless it's an extenuating circumstance and your policy really lays that out.
But more importantly, um, just, just to overly clarify, not necessarily our department, but outside departments, right?
Outside departments would not be able to see our data unless we chose to share it with them. Yes.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
Now, the nice thing about the program as well, though, is that we also could get access to publicly owned cameras. So if we had as an example, if Springham Mall was settling existence and they had a camera system out there, we could get access to their cameras or their data. They can share that with us. We would never share ours with them. But they can share, share us with us. If you look at it, if you wanna look at a model, look at Old Brook. Old Brook does a really nice job of sharing data with all of the community, all of the, the malls and stores around them. Um, and it it helps tremendously when they do their investigations.
They do. They catch a lot of robbers.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Any other questions or discussion?
I've just heard new chief twice, though. I'm not.
Yeah.
Yeah, I hope he's not going anywhere. Uh, okay, so I guess my first motion would be that, uh, we will, uh, proceed with um, moving forward with this and since we are not getting three bids and we're going, do we have to have a motion on the fourth or not?
Review the nine cameras in cost. Just to bring us up.
Right, sorry.
We were looking at the six cameras.
For six.
The six cameras to get it started. Um, and the cost, you know, we said.
And I can get, you know, everybody the copy of the contracts. So the six camera contracts, the first year costs, the, the contract total is thirty-nine thousand four hundred. That's for the, for two years. First year, the cost would be twenty-one thousand four hundred, which includes the installation of the cameras. Um, and then after that, the reoccurring cost is eighteen thousand.
Okay.
That's for the six cameras.
Okay.
And you can add if you want.
Yeah, if it was decided in the future they wanted it. Realistically, when, when I said when, when we first started this discussion, the pie in the sky, as far as the village is concerned, is nine cameras. That would cover pretty much every, every entrance into the village. We would be then covered. Um, if the village wanted to add a seven camera in two years or eight, that's up to you guys. Absolutely.
So are we, are we wanting to vote on this tonight?
Uh, I would like to vote, um, on the con- to get the contracts moving forward to.
One, 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 one question on that.
Contractor to be presented to us at this point.
Okay.
We just need the contract, right?
We can figure it out.
Consensus of the board is to obtain a copy of the contract for review. We can have, uh, the chief obtain a copy of the contract and we can put it on agenda for review on the fourth of, uh, or the twenty-first of October.
Just, yeah, cuz the thought, thought that I have is, well, we're bringing to table possibly a, a manager or an administrator and then this, so we do have to put priorities in place which we want because at the end of the day, we don't have unlimited funds. So we do gotta think about some of those stuff.
There is funding in this for the five year, in the five year cap.
Okay.
Plus the chief has gotten a grant uh, that he can use for part of it, if it's for a girl or a.
Well, the grant took care of half of what I had allocated for the five year cap for the body cams. So that twenty-six thousand, I think, is what we put in there. Only twelve thousand of that is, is going to be spent. So we have those funds left that we can apply towards this five year cap, at least sources project if you want.
Okay. Thank you.
Now consensus, we'll see a copy of the contract on, on the agenda, twenty-first of October.
Yeah.
Yeah, person figured, do we need to make a motion to wait for three bids?
That, no, uh, you'll need an extraordinary vote. Yeah, we'll need five votes.
Five positive votes to approve a contract without a bid.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I just was, I know that was discussed in the past and I just wanted to make sure.
Nothing further. Thank you.
That is, okay, we've got all the questions for, uh, the chief and the LPR resolved for the evening. We can move on. Thank you, Steve. Thank you, chief.
If I could just add one thing, I know there's, we had an incident that was over the last day and a half in town. Um, we had twenty mailboxes run over, um, so I think we've been talking about that. Um, I did post something on one of them. Everybody's saying we are on it. We're investigating. We do have a suspect already. Uh, matter of fact, I'm hoping he's gonna be in custody. Yeah, so, yeah, it was, it was an intentional hack. And again, I gotta thank the community cuz really our officers going out, talking to people, they showed us camera footage, gave us description of the person. We talked to the person that was in the car with them, got statements. So everything came together. It was really nice and, and the community helped us out tremendously with it, so.
Thanks.
Heart, he just said that he hoped that they were done and caught before the end of the does that mean it's somebody in the room?
No, they've been hurt enough.
Oh, okay. I just, you know, when you said before the end of the evening, I don't know. All right, thank you, chief. Uh, public buildings and environment.
No report tonight.
Uh, building and zoning, Thomas.
Um, you know, I'm just wanting to give the board an update. I was at a, uh, park district meeting the other night and I've been talking to Ed about this. Ed, they have received some preliminary drawings for the pools, uh, Randall Oaks and Sleepy Hollow. They are not finalized and they are going to have another meeting with the park district board and the pool committee that was created so that we can look at everything. The drawings, they are doing it, uh, out parts so that we can pull out, like if they have some big extravaganza over at Randall Oaks and we've been talking about just having lanes there. Um, you know, we can start pulling things out just to get some of the cost down and so I that's the update. They're hoping to have that meeting in November sometime. So I just want to keep everybody in the loop with what's going on with that.
All right, thank you, Kyle. Okay, moves us into the old business. Old business. The future is old business. The future of Saddle Club Neighborhood Park is the topic. Uh, as you've all known, the last couple of years, that park has had numerous conversations. It finally has gotten to the point, the equipment up there could no longer be repaired. Parks could not be found for the equipment that was up there. So it was decided to just take the equipment out and abandon the rest of the park at the moment. And decide what we want to do with it in the future. Okay, we've got a park up at Saddle Club that has no equipment in it. Any ideas what we want to do with it besides the pickleball court?
Pickleball court sounds fun. Uh, can we find Ed? You found like help last time for the park? Ed, can you come through again? You did a great job, Wes, Diane.
It's all.
I'll start up the discussion a little bit here. I received different requests for that big piece of property that does require maintenance, uh, for Public Works. They're just mowing it now. I've gotten from, we don't want anything up here. We're happy with it there because they're concerned with parking and outside use vehicles on the little ways there. Um, we've talked about, Pat and I have talked about maybe just picnic benches and a, um, you know, portable cooktops, grills. Do something like that. Another discussion was, what about something just for a little kid's park? Something very basic up there. Had another opinion, what about making it natural, prairie, put hiking trails in it?
Slide pad?
Talked, uh, that takes as much maintenance, I believe, as, as cutting.
We had that group of carpenters about a year ago. I think we might have had vague conversation about it, but I think insurance purpose, that group of carpenters said that they wanted to build something, but I think insurance wise, that wasn't.
That's interested into it. A pickleball court. Everyone loves pickleball. From what I know of that, it will encourage parking activity up there, although it is very popular. Maybe at this point, we need to get some direct feedback, some current direct feedback from the residents that live right next to it.
Would that be a public meeting?
We could probably put something in the newsletter.
A questionnaire, yeah.
No, I can, I can go house. You know. Yeah, I'll just tape it to their door. Much like I would do for a boil order type of situation.
Hey, if we allow parking, can I, is it okay if I charge residents five bucks?
He'll be like, Rick, leave.
You want the vendor rights?
When I charge you a five dollar tax.
Oh, this is where ICCI would be.
Yeah, another thing, uh, we need to review the survey. That was the residence input as to how much
One of them did suggest a pickleball on the survey.
Yeah.
I imagine that would probably be a big winner.
I thought a lot of communities complained about the noise, though.
Yes, well, then you have to ask the residents right there, I suppose, so. It'll deter the.
That it leads to who gets to use it when, can sign up by reservation, who has priority?
How do you?
Yeah, gotta be careful with something.
Eugene's really good with the website. He can just put a site up.
Well, I guess what we're, what, what I'm looking for as far as, uh, it's gonna be a budgetary item, no matter what we decide. So I'd like to have the board give me some guidance because I want to start putting this together for the five year cap. Um, I guess talk to your constituents. All, we can, we can, I can create a survey for you guys to look at at the next meeting and then I can go and hand it to the people on Churchill Court first. Um, but I'm just looking for what direction you guys want to go with this.
I say we go with what the, the most local people would probably want for their piece.
Let's get the survey.
And Kyle, it's gonna depend too, I'm cuz you guys won't have to maintain it, so.
Well, like if it's a, if, if it's a pickleball court, that's minimal maintenance. You know, we already mow up there anyways. We'll continue to mow up there, but some paint. lines on it and that, so that's no big deal.
You can put a putting green there in the corner too, in the northwest corner. I like that and I got someplace to go.
You want real grass or?
Just an eighteen hole golf course right behind there.
I don't know. We don't need to be adding.
Okay. So just for your, so Kyle is gonna draw up the survey? Is that, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I'll, I'll have it for the board to look at and look at there's additions or changes you guys want to make to it for the next meeting.
Ju- just for some cost information, I contacted some of our pressures that I associate with and I think it was one lady had a pickleball court put in sixty thousand dollars. And if a pickleball court, we would want to consider putting at least four parking spaces there, so you know, you're, you're looking. It's, it's not the chief alternative.
And you need fencing too.
Yeah, so.
Would it be fairly maintenance free, like for five or six years though after? I don't know. I'm asking.
Yeah, I'm playing with her.
Are you how small and how it's put in?
Ground settlement and.
Yeah.
Not all good bases.
We can put in concrete one.
Those are the dead over and what's, uh, real that are very familiar to the park. They, yeah.
That's just.
No. They, they made it into the lines into pickleball.
When it was originally.
Right. So I'm, I'm not sure. I don't remember.
We, we looked at doing pickleball at Sabatino too, and, and the cost just.
Matter of reminder that the park equipment was about a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
I just want tetherball up there.
Okay. So further discussion, once we get the survey, get some ideas from the residents in the neighborhood. Okay. Any other old business come before the board? Any other old business will go to new business. New business, roads and parks. Swales. In particular, Sleepy Hollow Road. Kyle. Mr. Steel and Jeff.
They're looking at each other.
Uh, I know they're looking at each other. I'll bring you all to speed. Uh, when you turn on the Sleepy Hollow Road coming south off of seventy-two, you come past the township border, you go around the big curve with the trees all up alongside the road by a ladder. And it comes on around, it goes down into Chelkey Creek. That is the swale that we're speaking of this evening. That swale has caused problems for a number of years uh, because it catches most of the drains from Route seventy-two coming south. And when it comes around that curve, it is coming with quite a bit of velocity and volume with it. Uh, it has been a problem with the road up there for a number of years. It's about to undercut that section of the curve. So conversations have been going on with Public Works and Kyle and Jeff and I about, uh, what can be done up there. The sooner the better. Uh, we were looking at about a hundred thousand dollar price tag. So it kept getting kind of put to the side. When we did Sleepy Hollow Road originally, we pulled it out because of the cost. Uh, but this year, when we were doing Crane, Crane came in about sixty, about sixty-five thousand dollars less than what we had forecasted, the engineer estimate I had was. So that sixty-five thousand, along with the twenty-five thousand that we normally put in for swale replacement and repair, brought us up to about ninety thousand dollars. That gave us an idea that we might be able to do something about that curve and that swale up there on the west side. So Mr. Steel was instructed to get an estimate from the contractors that were currently in town. They gave, came up with, uh, one of the bids, I believe it was about ninety-five thousand. We looked at, well, is there a second guy in the neighborhood that might be able to do it? And they came in at about ninety-seven thousand dollars. So we went to the third operation and they came back at about seventy thousand. So on your agenda tonight is the swale of Sleepy Owl Road drainage on the far north end on the west side. Uh, Jeff, you want to go with that? You've got the estimates and the.
Yes, basically, as if you remember, probably it was three, four months ago, is Kyle got a proposal in order to put storms who are under that or in that area. However, due to, uh, utilities is he can actually get storms who are in there because it will conflict with those utilities. So the next best option is to do, uh, the concrete swale through that area. Um, it'll help out as far as maintenance, sort of cutting the road. Also, I know Kyle has a clean little package. Like Stefan said, is basically we get all the drainage from uh, both the highway department and also Route seventy-two. So there's a lot of water that comes down that road. That's what'll help out as far as the drainage along there.
This is all the way up to the ladder?
It's odd assets to the passler, southmost part of the driveway of the highway.
And then it'll be kind of like the concrete swale, like on the far side, on one of the sides of Crane where you're coming from?
Yeah.
So, yeah. Okay. So, yeah, okay.
The purpose of this is it's damaging the road. So it's causing us down downstream, if you will. We don't do something.
Seems like the same kind of erosion issues we have over on Crane, so. Uh, why, why is the other, why, why is their estimate so much less?
Uh, they are actually a lot closer in town and it's just the time of year is they don't have a lot of, you know, they're winding down everything. So they're actually have crews available while everybody else is extremely busy.
Have we, have we employed them or used them before?
Yeah, I'd actually work.
I would say it's a very smart move to do it because if we lose that road, then we're looking at a lot more expense, um, than just.
We have a motion to accept the, uh. Proposal for landmark. Move by Harley, seconded by Deatley to approve the contract from landmark contractors in the amount of seventy thousand. Five hundred fifty-four dollars for the swale rework along the north section of, uh, of, uh, Sleepy Hollow Road, the left turn side. Any further comments, questions or discussion?
Sorry, I do have none. Wait, so this was the one that we were gonna do the sewer thing on or the swale work on before, right after we got the little mover thing made. Um, so we didn't do that. So do we still have that twenty thousand dollars from that? And that's gonna, is that applying to?
With the rest of the money we've got.
Thank you. Just followed on that. All right, I'm good.
Okay, any further comments or questions? Welcome please. Mr. Deatley. Ms. Bo. Ms. Thomas. Mr. Thorne. Ms. Revere. Mr. Harding. Six further votes, no negative votes, much as so carries, thank you all. Okay. Next item, then again, once again with the engineer. Uh, this time we're looking for the board to approve, uh. The, uh, engineer obtaining, uh, estimates and quotes for replacement of, uh, two series of culverts. One series of culverts on Hillcrest between Lake Paula and Lake Sharon. And the other culvert in question is the one, uh, right outside of Village Hall here on Thoroughbred Land Lane. Both of these are extremely large culverts, uh, somewhere in the thirty-eight to forty inch, uh, area. Uh, all, all of those culverts fall within the age of the village. Sixty-five years is the village. Those culverts are approximately sixty-five years of age also. Corrugated metal pipe has a fifteen year life expectancy. Uh, if you ask dogs, who was it asked about the detour signs on Locust the other day? We obtained those because of a failed culvert. You know, they, they do have a tendency to fail on us and the one on Lake Paula feeding Lake Sharon and the one in Jelkie Creek. Those two are extremely large and are extremely expensive and are close to failure, so. That is the reason that we have asked the, uh, board's consensus to authorize the village engineers to obtain the replacement cost. On both all the drainage and the thoroughfare drainage. Consensus the board to authorize. Okay. Mr. Steel. Got your authorization, it's, uh, find out what that's gonna set us back. Okay, the, uh, next one. Halloween trick or treat hours.
I'd like to say as late, as I suggested last year, eight o'clock. We didn't use it till eight o'clock last year cuz it snowed. But it's looking like this year it's more beautiful. But I, we did it last year, or I suggest we did it again. The kids were excited for it last year.
So what hour was your suggestion?
What did we have last year, three to eight?
I thought it was three to eight because like the younger kids.
We matched everybody in the neighborhood.
Yeah, cuz the middle school, the middle school doesn't get home until, they don't get out till three forty-five, so they don't get home till after four thirty with the bus service. The younger ones.
I thought we did like three to. Three o'clock till seven thirty. Okay, so three to eight. That's a lot of heads. Okay, the consensus is that Sleepy Hollow Trick or Treat Hours will be three to eight on Halloween.
Thank you.
All right. That was the easy one.
Buy extra candy.
That's what everybody did last year. So still sitting back. Okay, any other new business come forward?
Uh, yes, uh, Steve has one other thing here.
I just wanted to let the board know that I got a block party request, um, for the Monster Dash, which is something that I had talked to them about last year, which they submitted it to me. Um, I've been in communication with them, uh, with both Ty and Eska, Cobb. Um, we've kind of altered the route a little bit to make it a little bit more, a little bit easier for traffic to get around there. Um, so I'm comfortable with, uh, with approving the permits. I'm gonna go ahead and approve the permit. I'll work with Kyle to, to finalize the details. And it'll be on the twenty-sixth in the afternoon.
All right, thank you. Any other new business come up here? Moves in second, all in favor, signify by a two and a half. Most opposed, read the votes generally.